Planning Board Meeting of August 26. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm declaring the meeting open at 6:30. As usual, with these things, we requested that anybody has an intent to record the meeting, please notify the Chair. Otherwise, I will ask you to please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item, we have a request for continuation. It's, let's see, continue public hearing from May 13th, June 10th, July 8th for case number PB 2025-11, SSH Port LLC. Robert C. DiMarco, manager, One Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass. 02184 through their agent Marion Rose Esquire, Singer &amp; Singer Law Office, 26 Upper County Road, Dennis, Mass. 02639 seeks approval for a multifamily special permit and site plan review special permit with request for waivers. The proposed project is to construct a 28-unit multifamily structure and reconfigured parking. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich Sections 32551, 55, and Mass General Law 40A Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 606 Route 28, Assessor's Map 14, parcel Z18-2, and the parcel is approximately 76,226 square feet. Parcel is the commercial village, CV, and residential low-density RL zoning districts and within the Village Commercial Overlay District, VCOD. This is going to be continued till September 23rd, no earlier than 6:30 PM at the 204 Cultural Arts Municipal Building Auditorium at 263 South Street. May I have a motion to that effect?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to be continued to September 23rd at 6:30. I would like to jump in our agenda to take care of two pieces of business. In the public meeting section, case number PB 2025-22, John McIlwain, PLS, Cape and Islands Engineering Incorporated, Agent for Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc., seeks an endorsement of an A&R Approval Not Required Plan entitled Land Division Plan by Cape and Islands Engineering, John McIlwain, PLS, number 33602, July 22nd, 2025, for the property at 99 Queen Anne Road, Assessor's Map 57, parcel H1, in the residential low-density RL. In industrial limited zoning districts, the applicant has requested an extension to August 26th, and today is the 26th.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Peter Freeman, the attorney representing the applicant. Mr. McIlwain should be here, but I don't want to wait. If there are questions that you have that I can't answer or that Christine can't answer, then I would ask your indulgence and, you know, table it momentarily until after your next one, if that's okay.
Is this him coming in?
John is just coming in. Thank you.
Speak of the devil, and he shall appear.
So, the brief explanation is, and some of you were at the site visit, is basically to separate off what is one large parcel. One portion will be retained by the present owner, excuse me, President Owner Richard Welsh. The power lines cut through the property, and the second lot, labeled Lot 2, will continue to be, will be owned by Queen Anne Acres LLC. And the only access that's needed is to that lot. It does nothing to do in terms of access with the adjoining 40B project that is under review by the zoning board. So, the plans are pretty self-explanatory. The staff report, we thank Christine for that, and as it said, the fire department and consulting engineer, VHB, are okay with things. So, I'll stop there. If you want the plan to be described by John, if he's here, certainly.
Why don't we do that? Because not everybody was at the walk-through, so.
Good evening. John McIlwain, Cape and Islands Engineering. What we have before you tonight is an eight-acre parcel, which is off of Queen Anne Road and fronting on Anisus Road. We are proposing to divide it into two lots. The second lot, or Lot 2, is going to be used for conveyance purposes to the Queen Anne Acres LLC. And we're in two zones. One's industrial, and the other is residential. And that line that divides it is on Lot 1. It is the northerly line of an electric easement that runs through the property. We have frontage, an oasis of 160 feet. And then we have Lot 2, the one you're.
Conveying.
Divide, convey. And that has four acres of frontage on Anisus of 376 feet. And we were on the site today. I don't think there were many questions, but if there are any questions now, I'll try and answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. McIlwain. Ms. Flynn?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you, is an approval not required for endorsement by the board. Just to give a little bit of history regarding Anisus Road, there was a long, has been a long history with Anisus Road being considered an ancient way or a footpath. The applicant and their team did submit a lot of documentation and materials that were reviewed by town council. Town council did opine that the applicant made a demonstration that the road did exist prior to the subdivision control law, and as part of an A&R endorsement, that's one of the criteria that needs to be met. In addition to appropriate frontage, which both lots, both lots do have of 150 feet for subdivision for the A&R. I will say that VHB also did an evaluation for construction grade and width. For the grade and width for existing roads, the planning board has a 2009 policy for existing roads that a minimum width of 12 feet for an unpaved road must be met. VHB did confirm that finding. They also confirmed the frontage, and they didn't have any issues with the grading. However, they did have some concerns regarding the construction of the road, and particularly for low-lying vehicles. But given the work that's being done currently for Pine Oaks Village 4 and the improvements of the road and the access to this specific lot, town council opined that that was adequate, and it's up to the planning board to determine whether or not the access meets the grading, construction, and width. So, based on VHB's assessment, that was their recommendation. Town council, also based on the advice of town council, staff would recommend that they have met the criteria to endorse an approval not required.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? For those of us who went out, was there any observations about width and grading that already have any concern to us?
No.
Because I didn't.
I made it, I made it out there after you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Saw your email later. Appreciate you making the effort, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this isn't a meeting. We don't have anything to close. We don't have any further discussion. Any questions from the public?
I did just want to make one other comment. There were no deeded access, deeded easements for the road. Town council did opine that because it's an existing road, deeded access was not required as well. So, I did want to make that point very clear, and this should not be seen as precedent-setting of not requiring appropriate deeded access when we evaluate other unpaved roads in the future.
Right. Good to know. And I think the established nature of the road, going back to the 1630s in the pain book and in the early maps, kind of makes it qualifies for prior to the subdivision laws of 1951. I think it antedates that a little bit, so you're probably in the clear there. So, yes, Mary?
So, I would make a motion if we're ready.
Yes.
Okay. So, I would make a motion that the planning board endorse the approval not required plan based on the following findings, that 1, the evidence has shown that the existing private way pre-dated subdivision control law, dated March 25th, 1949. 2, that there is sufficient frontage for the approval not required plan, and that based on the findings of the town's consulting engineer, that the width and reading of the Mid-Cape Road is sufficient.
Have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I so declare it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for putting us first also.
My pleasure. We also can have a short order of business here with release of covenant that I'd like to take care of immediately. Case number PB 2025-23, Eastford MBT LLC, trustee of Eastford Homes Business Trust. Agent Susan Ledoux has requested the release of covenant for 1594 to 98 Orleans Road, lots 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, Assessor's Map 107, parcel S2-1 and S2-2, in the rural residential and DEP Zone 2 Water Resource Protection District. Definitive subdivision case is PB 2024-21, and Lot 8 was released in case 2025-02, and Lot 2 was released in case number PB 25-25-18. Hi, Susan. How are you tonight?
Hi. How are you? I'm fine. Susan Ledoux from Eastford Companies, and I believe what you just read covers what I would say to the board. We're just requesting release of the remaining lot, so it would be a full release of covenant.
Great. Any comments? Ms. Flynn?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If we could vote on the full release of the covenants as well as a performance security agreement, those were the only two documents for the purposes of this evening. The applicant did provide a financial surety of $256,000 for the remaining cost of the road installation as well as municipal services, and I would recommend that we move forward with the, a full release of the covenant and to adopt the financial security agreement.
Very good. Any questions, comments from the board? Mary?
No.
Care to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I would move that we accept and approve the security, the amount of $256,000 to cover the remaining roadwork required by case PB 2025-23, the due manner, and I would further move that we release the remaining lots and the covenant for the due manner.
Very good. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I so declare it. Thank you very much, Susan.
Thank you. Have a good night.
YouTube?
Mr. Chair, if you could also vote to accept the financial security.
Yes, we'll do a separate motion on that, then.
It's just the financial security agreement.
No, I thought that's how I opened it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then that's covered. That should be fine.
I thought you mentioned it, but I mean.
I did, but I can, we can clarify just to confirm that the planning board accepts the financial, financial security of $256,000 to cover the remaining roadwork.
So, separate motion?
Adequate, yes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We've covered our collective posterior therewith. So, now we continue on to the second public hearing that should have been number two on the agenda, which is continued public hearing from August 12th, 2025, for case PB 2025-17. Eliza Kendall through their agent Mark Dibb, PE Cape and Engineering, sorry, Cape and Islands Engineering, seeks approval for a site plan review special permit with request for waivers. Proposed project is to construct a 4,800-square-foot prefabricated metal building for contractor base with access, parking, and utilities. Application is pursuant to the code of Harwich Sections 32551 and 32555, along with Mass General Law Chapter 40A Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 103 Main Street Extension, Assessor's Map 55, parcel N1-2, and the parcel is approximately 20,201 square feet. Parcel is in the industrial limited IL zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening again. Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering. So, at the last hearing, we did present the project, and what we had been working on was a peer review with VHB. We had resubmitted documents to them prior to the hearing a couple days earlier, but had not received any information back. We did recently receive a second review from VHB. I did get a chance to look at that this morning and resubmit some documents over to VHB. I can go through those items if necessary, but the main thing was continuing to answer some questions on drainage. We did add some capacity to both systems in the front and in the back in order to address concerns about different-sized storms and some emergency overflow and additional storage. I do believe we've answered those questions. And with that, we have, I haven't seen a report, but I'll have Christine fill us in on the results of resubmitting those documents. With that, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Great. Ms. Flynn, let's go with you first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick update relative to the VHB Stormwater Management Report in your packets is the response from Mr. Dibb for Cape and Islands Engineering in response to VHB's recommendation. VHB had, VHB's responses are highlighted in yellow, and Mr. Dibb, his responses are in blue. I did speak with Steve, or exchanged emails with Steve Rhodes, the town's consulting engineer from VHB. They didn't have any additional comments. They felt that the applicant had addressed any of the remaining concerns that they had, and there were no other comments from VHB.
I thought the one thing that got, that I thought was dangling was, I think it's on page three, third paragraph from the bottom, "Given the reliance on the catch basin back float for relief, VHB recommends the applicant revise the plans to ensure the rim elevation of the contributing catch basin set above the modeled high-water elevation for the 25-year storm event in order to avoid surcharging under design conditions." Was that?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that sounds like it's the only condition that I saw.
There were a couple of conditions that VHB, I think the applicant had offered to, in response to VHB's concerns.
Okay.
Mark, did you want to?
Yeah, what we did was we actually added some storage to that system.
So, that's what, what you're saying, that what you introduced us to was the, was the answer to that? Okay. I just want to make sure, because it sounded like you were letting it go, that you weren't addressing his stuff that Christine was going to, okay, all right.
Yeah, I was letting Christine just give the update on, from VHB, that's all.
Pretty good.
It was just largely the four main comment areas that VHB had identified and made some recommendations as a conditional approval for the project.
Got it. Mary?
Mr. Chair, Christine, I don't believe I'm voting on this correct.
Correct. You, as well as Mr. Muns, are not voting on this project.
Right. Are there any other questions on this particular project from the board? I guess there's, Muns the word? Mun's the word? So, I suspect that probably if we don't have any, let's see, is there any questions from the public? I should make that. Is there anybody on board? No?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep, duly noted. We have two abstentions. So, we are closed, we've closed the hearing. Any further comments or discussion before we entertain a motion to approve or approve as?
Point order, pending the back next.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. All right, so finding of facts. Are you allowed to read? No. Okay. Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed findings of facts. 1, the applicant is Scott's Landscaping. 2, property owner is Ronald J. Kendall Jr. and Eliza J. Kendall. 3, the subject property is 103 Main Street Extension, Map 55, parcel N1-2. 4, property is located in the industrial limited IL zoning district. 5, the application for a site plan review special permit was filed with the town clerk on June 23rd, 2025, and August 11th, 2025. 6, site plan, proposed site development plans by Mark D. Dibb, PE, civil, civil number 45937, dated 6/5/25, stamped in with the town clerk on 7/8/2025, and revised plans August 11th, 2025. 7, revised stormwater plans dated August 11th, 2025. 8, in addition, the board finds that the site plan review, A, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood; B, the specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition; C, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians; and D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of the appropriate sewage treatment facilities, which provide for de-nitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water supply wells, ponds, or saltwater embankments.
Have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, with two abstentions. And we have a motion to grant waivers?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver request relative to the planting a tree for every five parking spaces. The applicant has made an effort to preserve several of the existing trees toward the front and rear of the property.
Motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, with two abstentions.
Like to make a motion to approve with conditions, case PB 2025-17, Scott's Landscaping, 103 Main Street Extension, for approval of a site plan review special permit pursuant to 325-51 and 325-55 of the codes of the Town of Harwich, a property located at 103 Main Street Extension, Map 55, parcel N1-2, in the commercial highway 1, CH1, residential rural RR zoning districts and DEP Zone 2. The decision is based on the financing fact with the conditions of approval. The applicant is Scott's Landscaping. Property owner is Ronald J. Kendall Jr. and Eliza J. Kendall. 3, the subject property is 103 Main Street Extension, Map 55, parcel N1-2. 4, the property is located in the industrial limited IL zoning district. 5, the application for a site plan review special permit was filed with the town clerk on June 23rd, 2025. 6, site plan, proposed site development plans by Mark D. Dibb, PE, civil number 45937, dated 6/5/2025, stamped in with the town clerk on 7/8/2025, and revised set of plans dated August 11th, 2025. 7, the applicant shall need an approved septic system by the Board of Health. 8, building floor plans shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. 9, there shall be no storage of hazardous materials on the, onsite. 10, the decision shall run with the property. Conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. 11, the special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, either that no appeal has been filed or that an appeal had been filed within such time period is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. 12, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await determination of appeal referred to in General Law Chapter 40A Section 17 from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of a permit construction, if construction is not begun by such date except for good cause. 13, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. And 14, the applicant shall conform to the inspection, certification, and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second to the motion?
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
If we could make one correction on that the revised plans were submitted on August 26th, revised site plans, and then also add the applicant's offers to provide further information prior, as outlined in this document here. So.
Can we name the document?
Yep. For the Cape and Islands Engineering, the applicant's response stated August 26th. The applicant has agreed to provide full building plans submitted, that will be submitted prior to the issuance of the building permit, with one additional condition, all test pits for, that the applicant understands the risks regarding to the number of test pits performed to the date of the project. And that the applicant has acknowledged that there's been a redesign to include the additional row of galleys, and the system will be, will be able to handle a 50-year storm and will not surcharge the rim height while doing so. And that system number 2 has been revised.
Okay.
For emergency overflow, sorry.
I'd like to make an amendment to my motion.
Please.
So, for item number 6, is that the one?
Dated August 26th.
The amendment strikeout August 12th, or, sorry, August 11th, 2025. Change that to August 26th, 2025. And then, guess number 15. That conditional approval be included or required in that full building design plans, including scaled floor plans, elevations, door, window, location, be submitted for review and approval prior to issuance of the building permit. This recommendation is made with the understanding that the applicant faces the potential risk of encountering unfavorable subsurface conditions. And number 16. That system 1 has been redesigned and now includes the additional row of galleys. The system will now handle the 50-year storm and will not surcharge the rim height while doing so. Number 17, system number 2 has been revised. Two additional rows of galleys have been added to provide storage for the 100-year storm event.
I think that covers it. We accept, vote to accept the amendments right now? A motion to accept?
The second has to accept the amendments.
The second has to accept the amendment, so you have to accept the amendments that you just made. Oh, it's that?
What was the second?
So, Ellen was the second, right? Oh, you made the proposal.
I made the motion.
Do we?
Yes, whoever made the second, was that?
You don't think we got a second?
Then it needs to be seconded.
All right. As moved and amended, may I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Ready for the discussion? Careful now. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous with the two abstentions. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Dibb. So, that takes us then to final pieces of business with having to do with the local comprehensive plan, Pine Oaks 4, and the request, ZBA's request. And that's it, I think, for this evening.
There are two other items. There are two other items.
Okay.
Really quick, the Barnstable Registry of Deeds asked the planning board to sign off to provide signatures.
Oh, yes, right.
Just for validation of signatures when documents get filed with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, they can be confirmed by the registry. I have, I have a document if you wouldn't mind signing.
That requires a special pen or? No.
No, it doesn't. Just a regular pen will be adequate. And in terms of Pine Oaks Village 4, the zoning board of appeals, Chair, did request that the planning board provide some comments relative to the project, and I am working on an outline. I did confer with the chair last week to provide some, to provide a brief overview of some of the items that fall within the purview of the planning board, such as parking, traffic, pedestrian safety, in addition to overall site plan review and stormwater management. So I am putting together a brief outline for your consideration at the September 9th meeting. I will send it, I will provide the outline prior to the meeting. I will also say that all of the materials, and it's been really extensive in terms of the application, are all up on the ZBA website. And I encourage you just to, to go through the materials and, and, you know, just to give it some consideration if you have concerns or would like to convey any information, and you may not, you may not, you may feel that a lot of the issues have been adequately addressed either by the applicant or the town's peer review consultants. But it's, but I, I think the intention of the chair was really to foster greater input from town boards and committees and just to really do due diligence and to welcome any feedback as much as possible from, from the town boards and committees, but particularly regulatory boards that, that normally, if this was not under the comprehensive permit law, that we would have, that the planning board, for example, would have purview over the project. So I did want to just give a quick update. I was hoping to have an outline done today. However, I was, I did not complete it yet. So we had a field trip instead, yes. But I, I do again encourage you, the next meeting is September 17th. It's going to be.
I guess the 23rd, isn't it?
No, that's our meeting.
All right.
For Pine Oaks Village 4, the next meeting is September 17th. The primary item for discussion is going to be the environmental impacts. They will also just do a very brief update for traffic and then also for site, site plan and stormwater, just to finalize the, the peer review process between the applicant and the applicant's consulting team and the town's peer review consulting team. And so it has been fairly cordial between the two consulting teams. And so we are looking to move the project forward. It will probably go into the fall, but right now the next meeting is September 17th. And any extensions for future meetings will be really at the, at the discretion of the applicant, unless they ask us for an extension, so. But as of right now, the next meeting is September 17th. It's going to be at the multipurpose room in the community center.
Okay, great. And anything about the LCP?
Yes, we did finally have a rollout of, we rolled out the local planning committee, I should say, rolled out the final draft of the local comprehensive plan. We did have a community engagement session. We had over 20 members in attendance as well as some members of the planning board, which I was very happy to see. And we have extended a 60-day comment period. And we are also, the local planning committee members will be going back to town boards and committees, but particularly their regulatory boards, just to provide an update. But also, if there's any feedback, please let us know by the end of September. We are, the document will be ready for annual town meeting next May. And so it is very exciting. It's been a long journey. And I think the committee has done a really outstanding job in terms of community engagement, but also when we look at the future of the, for the town in terms of land use development and growth, growth policies. There's, there is a wealth of information and guidance within the document relative to affordable housing, transportation, economic development, historic character, as well as water quality and the preservation of open space. So I would strongly encourage you to take a look at the document. It's pretty comprehensive. And if you have any questions or comments, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Very good. Thank you so much. Mary?
Mr. Chair, two questions through you and Christine if I could. When does the 60-day comment period end?
September 30th.
So if it's, if it's September 30th is the expectation for the planning board to actually make comments to the local comprehensive plan committee prior to the expiration of the 60 days? Because my understanding is that then it comes back to us at some point as well, correct?
Correct, yes. The planning board will need to hold a formal public hearing and to adopt the plan. Prior to, we're hoping to do that prior to, obviously, annual town meeting. But for the comment period, which ends at September 30th, if there is any feedback, we would like to have that now, sooner than later. The members are going to the regulatory boards to solicit further information. But once we close the comment period, we'll, we will all, the attention is also to ask those, the various town boards and committees for letters of support regarding the local comprehensive plan.
Do we have a meeting other than September 23rd before September 30th?
Yes, September 9th.
So I just wondered, should we put that on as a discussion topic for our September 9th meeting? Just in case this board has comments to it before September 30th?
Absolutely.
I hate to leave it till the 23rd just because of what else is already on the table.
No, I'd be happy to put it on the agenda in addition to the Pine Oaks Village 4 discussion as well.
Great, thank you. Perfect.
My, my second question, sorry, was relative to it was the same question, actually. It was what our meeting was before Pine Oaks Village. So we do have this, this September 9th. So you answered two with one stone. So thank you.
And shot.
Two boards with one stone.
It doesn't happen often, but I'll take it.
I appreciate it.
And did you have a question?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Any other business for the board this evening? Hearing none? Like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Flynn.